Are we ready? I would like to call to order the Cloverdale Planning Commission meeting of August 5th, 2025. Commissioner Waggy, would you please start us off in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, can we please get a roll call?
Thank you, Chair. Let the record reflect that all planning commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Williams. Alternate Commissioner.
Do any planning commissioners have any conflicts of interest on any agenda items today? Let the record show there are none. Are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes.
Is there any -- now we're moving on to item B. Are there any persons wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda? You may do so at this time. There are none. We have no presentations. We have no approval of minutes. So we are on to item E, public hearings. Modification to an approved conditional use permit and design review for the construction of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Wellness Center project.
So we're going to start off and then ask the architect from the project, Matt Stromberg, to come up and walk us through it, but we'll just give you a little background before we do that.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, fellow planning commissioners. The conditional use permit and designer review have a two-year essentially lifespan, and they asked for a one-year time extension in 2024, which was granted, and again, the same thing in 2025. So again, the project -- so current project is set to expire in 2026, but they have submitted for this modification to the previous approvals. The appropriate SECA document was adopted along with the original approval in 2022, the initial study, and mitigated negative declaration, and also included mitigation monitoring reporting program also. Next slide, please. Just a rapid -- that SECA document is still seen as the appropriate SECA document for this modification to the reduced size and scale of the project. So this is the project site. Previously, when we went through this, the site didn't have an address, but it's now been addressed to 321 South Cloverdale Boulevard, essentially at the southwest corner of Citrus Fair and South Cloverdale Boulevard. And it's in the TOD zoning district. Next slide, please. So again, yeah, so this is a modification of the 47,000 square foot, three stories, reduced to 27,031 square feet in the two-story structure. Next slide, please. So the written statement was included some of the proposed mix of uses. Again, mainly it's the primary care clinic with other professional services that will be available at the wellness center, including dental health, behavioral health, urgent care, wellness programming, their administrative offices, and other leasable space. And again, the clinic is outpatient only. It's not an overnight, essentially not a hospital. It's a overnight, or sorry, outpatient care service. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan essentially shown, the parking lot. There's 100 -- I think the original was 169 spaces. There's 161 or 164 in this one. It's essentially mainly the same from the last except for some of the reduced spaces with the bioretention areas, a spot for the parklet in the northwest corner, the extension of South Washington, and the meditation garden and landscaping in the front, and also the drive-in drop-off at the front, off of the city street essentially. And next slide, I just have a couple of little zoomed in of the meditation garden and some of the landscaping up in the front. Next slide, please. So with that, this planning commission has any questions for staff? Staff would recommend that the city -- or so the planning commission would recommend to the city council approval of the modification to the conditional use permit and designer review. And staff is here to take any questions if you have any. And again, the applicant is here to answer any questions as well and make a brief presentation.
Okay. They can make a presentation at this time?
Matt, do you want to? Mike, can you go to the next slide?
Yeah, and the following slides, I just, I have most of the ones, Matt, from the plant set. Anything you want to talk about in particular?
Why don't you -- hi, my name is Matt Stromberg. I'm the architect for the Alexander Valley Healthcare. Sorry.
It's on, but it's not.
It's on, it's not, yeah.
Hello?
Sounds like it's on, but quiet. Can you hear me now?
It'll have to do.
All right. Again, my name is Matt Stromberg. I'm the architect for Alexander Valley Healthcare. There we go. And I am happy to be here tonight to move this project forward and to modify the previously approved use permit. So as was mentioned, we have downsized the building considerably. It had been a 47,000 square foot, three-story building, and we have modified that now to a two-story building with approximately 27,000 square feet. And all of the programming that was originally in the three-story building has remained. So it's just been reduced in scale and size. And the thought is that at the southern portion where the building used to extend in the direction of Hillsburg Avenue, there could be a Phase 2 project at a later moment. From a programming -- can you hear me? Switch it up. Can you hear me? All right. So from a programming standpoint, as Raphael mentioned, it is a primary care clinic. There will be a dental clinic. There's behavioral health. The building is really focused on the idea of wellness and health and healing, and the design does what it can to help encourage that. So on the outside of the building, I guess maybe we could go back. There was a slide that showed the exterior materials. Yeah. There you go. That's perfect. So the design looks to really integrate with the surrounding environment. So the materials are natural in character. The second story is vertical cladding. It's actually a fiber cement product that looks a lot like wood. It carries a wood grain. The first story is an acrylic stucco storefront. Color palette, all in sort of a natural color palette that will blend nicely with actually the way the field looks just now as a sort of a yellow grassy site. So if we go to the next slide, please. So here's sort of a zoom in of the stucco on the lower left, the two fiber cement siding materials to the right of that, and then black anodized storefront system and wood or wood-like soffits at the overhangs. So the building form has been simplified insofar as it used to have sort of a more sinewy floor plan layout on the first floor, and for cost-reducing reasons, we've regularized the structure. The structure itself is going to be mass timber, which we're very excited about, which is, you know, a very sustainably grown green product that sequesters carbon, keeps it out of our atmosphere, and also lends itself to a very healing environment inside the building. So as folks walk into the building, they will be exposed to the actual Douglas fir wood structure of the building. They'll see that expressed. So we're looking forward to that. Perhaps, next slide, please. You can keep going through. These are just sign diagrams. So from a site layout standpoint, it's almost exactly the same as far as parking is concerned. There are some moves here that I'll just call to your attention, the traffic calming, the slowing down as you come in off that access drive, which comes off of South Cloverdale Boulevard. There's an intentional bend there to slow folks down, to help with wayfinding as far as material transitions. It's a simple parking lot layout, but one that is intended deliberately to help people understand that they've arrived at a calm, healing place. There are bioretention areas for treating stormwater. There's all natural, or I should say drought-tolerant planting. There will be lighting in the parking lot for nighttime hours. And we did see there's a new condition of approval for purple pipe for recycled water, which the building will be set up for. So the planting will also accommodate recycled water when it comes to Cloverdale. We can keep going. Roof plan, we can just keep going there. So these are the exterior elevations, and the very top, which was on the roof plan previously, you could see that all of the mechanical rooftop equipment will be screened from off-site. So that's what that dark gray horizontal portion is. We can keep going. We've seen these. Oh, that's a civil drawing.
We're through the architecturals.
Super interesting to some people. Actually, you can pause here. So this is the rendered site plan. And again, as Raphael pointed out, there are designs for gathering spaces outside the building. The site design of the building is meant to be just as healing and restorative as the inside of the building. So there are some meditation gardens. There is a small orchard at the front corner. There are outdoor shaded areas that are meant for people to be able to collect themselves before or after their doctor's appointments. So the purple-looking rectangular shapes are solar PV shade structures over the parking spots. And we will have a full complement of electric vehicle charging stations at this site. And with that, I'll just make myself available for questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll bring it back to commission for questions and comments.
I have a question for staff. With this reapproval, does this extend the timelines for them and give them ample time to work on their project? Or do we have to go through that same amendment of timelines over and over again? The reset, this one doesn't work either, Mike. Hello? Here we go. Yes, reset. There's also a component to this, which is the development agreement, which the council has to approve. So there's, in that agreement lays out like kind of what their conditions are and what the city, the city will be contributing some to the roads. And so, so once the planning commission, if you choose to adopt the resolution, we'll be moving on to the city council for that final piece, and then they'll be, I think you might be trying, working on the building permit now. So.
Yeah, I mean, our community is going to love the mass timber and the two-story versus three-story, because I think three-story was pushing it last time. So I think it's going to be a good spot of that. But the reduction of square footage, in my mind, I'm a little concerned about the other uses of space in the building. You talked about your programming is still able to still fit in there, which I think is a valuable location for healthcare, especially services. And, you know, the fire department's right there nearby. There's so many different services right in that, right off the freeway area. But it's a TOD space. So TOD is meant for low parking. It's meant for high revenue, which is like retail space or hotels or things like that. So what I'm asking is, in the original approval in 2022, I remember us really carving out a big section for healthcare-related retail if we could try to recruit it, or maybe having goals set of trying to fill in so much of the retail space so that we could get that revenue. This is coming up on a couple of projects where the city loses a lot of tax revenue because the TOD land's not being used for a tax that meets TOD. Alexander Valley Healthcare doesn't meet the TOD. The, even the uses of the motels right now is actually cutting the taxes out from the city. Why do we have the highest tax rate? So do you have a plan in your intention of where that could fit in with retail and, you know, like different, whether even is copy shops or relocation of something that's healthcare-related, health retail, things that could actually work towards that TOD? And the parking lot is so large. My other follow-up question is, is that, does that complete parking lot necessary? It could work with the community. Think about that, because we don't really have a downtown parking area. So how friendly is it going to be to people outside for the community? Because it's going to become the parking lot, if you think about it. And we're promoting over projects that now that reduce parking spaces. So, and TOD is supposed to. But what, do you have any intention for those two in your plan?
Yeah, so as I understand it, the project is fully allowable under the TOD municipal code, so we're not seeking any special dispensation there. And as far as retail goes, the space doesn't have any specific carve-outs for shops or stores or anything of that sort. There will be a pharmacy in the, in the facility. It's a huge job creator, so as far as foot traffic and bringing revenue into the city and having those dollars spent in the city, I think there's a real big plus side to having the organization there. The county will be running offices out of the space. I don't believe they have any retail intent there, but there's a community gathering space inside the building. The parking lot itself is oversized, as you noted. It's still sized essentially for the Phase 2 of the building if and when that does get applied for and built in the future. The idea being that that parking lot could serve for other events, Citrus Fair, any other large type of event that the city's having.
That would be the perfect farmer's market.
It's also already been used, as you, I'm sure, are aware, as a staging area for Cal Fire during, you know, fire events. So I would imagine that the organization would still be amenable to being very present and involved in those emergency-type situations as well.
A follow-up question on the parking lot. Is it going to be closed off on the weekends? Is it going to be available for use outside of normal business hours?
Can you come to the mic, Debbie? Do you mind coming up?
Do you understand?
Otherwise, we can't, the audience can't hear.
Yeah, if you just announce your name, just so we can get it on record.
Sure. My name is Debbie Howell. I'm the CEO at Alexander Valley Healthcare. We plan on, we already have an agreement with Citrus Fair for the use of the parking lot. And we plan to work with the school, of course, because they have events and the different activities that go on. I like the idea of like having the market, the farmer's market there on the weekends. We're open Monday through Friday. We may have urgent care open on Saturday, but that's a very small part of the whole practice, and that is open to all members of the community. It's not just our patients. The other item that we're going to have is an open lab for all community members. That won't be part of our services. It'll be an outside lab, because we don't have any labs close by. Everyone has to leave town to get their blood drawn if they're not our patient. And then another thing that will be open to the public is a vaccine clinic. We learned from COVID that we need to have the facility and the space and the parking available for any kind of emergency health situation that we experience with COVID. What was the other thing I was thinking about? Oh, and the pharmacy. That's the other thing. That might be a retail draw.
It will. I think the difference between retail and not is just going to be what can be billed to your health, to your insurance. So insurance, well, anything bought through insurance would not be, but retail's, I think, 60, 70%, or pharmacies, 60, 70% retail, and then there's the big pharmacy.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's kind of the plans right now. And then, as Matt mentioned, is that we do have a Phase 2 aspect. We're not planned out yet. We're, you know, we'll get to that when we get this one built. But that's the other part, because the fact of it is, is we're growing, the city's growing, healthcare's becoming hard to get with or without insurance, to be honest with you. So I think that we will outgrow the current plans of 27,000 square feet pretty quickly within probably five years.
So one of the challenging aspects, I guess, is having these, the little parklet to the northwest, and then, you know, the meditation area and stuff like that. Is that?
That's the area where the Phase 2 would go in.
Understand, right. Is there any plan or intention to manage how that's used off business hours?
Phase 2? Oh, no. The garden area?
Yes.
Well, we do plan on having security, so I don't know if that is what you're asking.
It's open to the public.
It's open to the public, yeah. We don't want.
And it's going to be now secured, so.
Pardon me?
And you'll have some security behind it as well, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
Try the microphone. My question involves what seems to be, I guess it's called Police Station Drive. How do you envision the circulation along there, especially because of the parent-children traffic going to and from Washington School?
Well, we did a traffic study. I don't remember what year we did that.
Kevin or Matt, do you remember?
2019. We envision most of our traffic coming from Hillsburg Avenue, and then our driveway to our site is like halfway, not halfway, but almost halfway of the road to the site, and then you come in. So it's, we're not going past the school and onto Citrus Fair Drive. There's no interest, there is an emergency entrance on Citrus Fair Drive, but not open. They would have to take up the ballards? Is that what it's called? I'm not construction, so bear with me. They have to explain things to me many times. And then we have the drop-off in the front of the building for people that are, have trouble walking, et cetera. So I don't, we did, the traffic study did not indicate causing a lot, you know, a lot of traffic jams in relation to the school. You want to?
Just quickly, quickly add to that. So from an emergency fire access standpoint, the idea is that apparatus would come in either off of Cloverdale Boulevard or from the southern new section of Washington Street, connect to, I call it the drive aisle, but maybe it's on drawings as Police Station Drive. They would connect to that and be able to circulate in our site. They'd have all of the radii necessary to maneuver within our parking lot and exit the same way and out, either on the southern half of Washington Street or back out to Cloverdale. So as Debbie mentioned, there is a gate shown along Citrus Fair Boulevard. It's sort of an idea of, one of many of kind of future-proofing the site. So if and when there is access off of Citrus Fair, that curb cut would already be there. It's designed now to have a gate, and the fire department would have a Knox box and be able to open it in the event of an emergency.
Thanks. How about the school traffic? Do you anticipate the school traffic using that Police Station Drive?
It did not come up in the traffic report that was done. The way, as I recall, the traffic was looked at with respect to the school is that they come in off of Citrus Fair Boulevard and from the north section of Washington Street.
Well, the Citrus Fair has made that road very unfriendly with their, whatever, speed bumps. Personally, I think the city should take over that road, and it should be that you could use that back X, your back gate, just as part of a normal access point. And I don't know what the politics are in town, but it seems to be a don't-touch-it kind of a thing. But it's a decent street that's really been made quite unfriendly by the Citrus Fair.
Could I just interject? So there will be some improvements to that section of Citrus Fair. Right now, on the southern edge of that street, there's, it's gravel, and as part of this project, we will be installing a sidewalk curb and gutter and then repairing the pavement to the curb.
And you're going to let them use it during the Citrus Fair?
There is an arrangement. Yeah. Yeah, and the sidewalk, by the way, is a public sidewalk there between the two properties. Well, it's technically on AVH property, but there's an easement through it six foot wide.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for the staff. Do we have a rendering from the 2022 versus this one to show the, I'm not as much the building space, I know that's been reduced, but the use of space outside, the open space? Because I recalled there was a potential skateboard park, which I'm glad is not included in this. And then there was the police station, and how does that fit into this? And how is that affected by this change? Were those all removed?
Well, the skateboard location was sold to the school by the city, and that's where they have their new turnout. Yeah, so that was done with the council a few months, a years ago. And then this, the city still retains ownership of the southern parcel. There's been talk of a police station there, but that's a lot of money, so there, you know, it could potentially be a police station. But at this point, there's no plans for that. But we do retain.
The southern parcel?
Yeah, let me see if there's a.
At that bottom corner spot?
Yeah, so below what he's calling Police, the middle drive there is still, it's 1.4 acres, it's owned by the city. And this project's really going to improve the city's lot by putting Washington in, in that middle road. So, you know, there was some talk of trying to get some housing there, but that never really happened. But it's still owned by the city and could potentially be a police station if it's just, you know, $20 million.
But it's setting it up for the future, so.
Oh, yeah, this, this project really does make the city's parcel a lot more valuable.
Yeah, I would think with the passer on Washington, it would help considerably. Any thoughts about parking in front of the facility on the Boulevard? Or is that something that's being looked at, being controlled to some extent or no? It's where the lanes merge right there.
That's a drop-off zone?
Yeah, we've discussed restriping and looking at that, you know, where the two cars are on Cloverdale Boulevard, north of Citrus Fair, and then you're racing. So that is on our list to have a traffic engineer give us suggestions. And I think when this project moves forward, we're going to have, that's going to become more urgent, and we're going to have to figure out, so people aren't racing in front of this facility to get ahead of each other.
Yeah.
The council has discussed that. We just haven't, we haven't hired the traffic engineer to complete that.
Yeah, that, I mean, one of my main concerns is that at Washington School drop-off, coming on Washington Street southbound, there's no stop sign there, and I've drop-off, coming on Washington Street southbound, there's no stop sign there. And I've seen on multiple occasions, kids almost get run over when there's no, nobody out there with the sign. And so I can only imagine that if there's still no stop, stop sign and the ability to come straight through, that, you know, obviously, there's going to need to be some traffic control there and, and some modifications to it. And also, if people start using it after dropping kids off and they want to come out the new street to the boulevard, needing some sort of control there, because I could see people wanting to avoid the stoplight and, and go that, and go that route and cause additional issues. Traffic drop-off's always a problem.
You made a stop sign on the existing Washington?
Yeah.
Between the citrus and the school?
Yep. Yeah, there's one heading west on Citrus Fair, but there's not one heading south on, on Washington. And so, and that's where all the kids cross. Like, a lot of people get, come right up to face the Citrus Fair and get dropped off at the corner there. And then the kids cross the street in that crosswalk, but there's no stop sign there. So, yeah, so people are, go straight through. And oftentimes, you know, people just fly through there. Especially if there's nobody doing traffic control in the mornings or in the afternoons. So it definitely needs to be looked at.
One last question for you as well. If there ever is the potential to work with your project to help the Citrus Fair Road be improved, I know you're, you're doing a great deal to maintain the site of it, but would you be willing to work with them if we could find a way to improve that road in the same project? Because it needs to be improved at some point. Whose, whose responsibility does that fall on? The city? Or is it Citrus Fair?
Private street.
Private road. Okay. Because updating their speed bumps to a, a Rumbler or something like that would be better. I agree that there needs to be slowdown for the kids, but you, we could update the road at the same time.
It's at the wrong location, because that's not where the kids are crossing. The kids are crossing up at the corner at the school. And that's where I've seen kids nearly get hit, including my own. It's kind of a scary thing to unfold in front of you when people are just flying through there. And that's why we need a speed bump and stop sign at the other side. And especially because now people can go, when, once it's installed, they're going straight through. So they're not even slowing down to make that left turn. They're just flying straight on. So.
Can I ask a question to staff? On the drawing where it says, not that drawing, on the rendered drawing where it says limit of work, there's something, there, is that a bus parking? I mean, is that bus drop-off or right there?
By the school? Yeah.
So that's a school bus drop-off?
Correct.
Turn around?
Yeah, that's the piece that was going to be the skate park. And this, the school has done some work out there, the curb. So until Washington goes through, you know, they won't obviously be able to use it.
They've built that bus pole out there.
I, I, I went by there yesterday and I was trying to figure out what it was. And I thought, oh, it's probably a school bus drop-off, but I wasn't sure. And.
Yeah, that's it, Mike.
So the road goes on the other side. The current road goes on the west, to the west of that. But I don't quite understand that.
Anybody else? Should we open it up to public comment then?
Good evening. My name is Mark Thayer. I live at 411 Clover Springs Drive. I moved to Cloverdale in 2000. When I arrived here, there were three doctors in private practice in the phone book. I called each one of the three, thinking, you know, it might be prudent as a new member of the community to get a, get a doctor in case I got six somewhere along the line. And I called all three and none of them were accepting new patients. So I continued to go with my doctor in San Francisco for four years. Then I found Alexander Valley Healthcare. And over time, by 2009, I would join the board of directors. I was chairman of the board till 2014, when after six years, you term out, go on to do something else. So I want to thank the members of the planning commission, the staff of the city council, for all of the, or city, city employees, for all the work that they have done over the years to bring this project to fruition. One of the things that I'm really thrilled about is we're going to have some specialists. And when the specialists are practicing here in Cloverdale, we're, I'm not going out of town and we're not sending our patients out of town. Because what I find is when I go out of town, I go shopping. And if I stay, if I stay in town, my sales tax will stay in town with it. So thank you all for all your support over these many years.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the community wishing to speak at this time? Nobody? All right. Okay. If there's nothing else from the commission, can I get a motion?
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't.
I got it right here.
We're, we're on it today.
Okay. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Cloverdale recommending to the city council, the City of Cloverdale, approval of a modification to a previously approved design review and conditional use permit for the construction of the Alexander Healthcare Wellness Center on the 2.8 acre project site located at 321 South Cloverdale Boulevard, APN 001-440-052.
Anybody second?
Second.
Can I please get a roll call? All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Okay. Motion passes. Sorry. So we are on to new business, which there is none. Are there any commissioner reports today? No commissioner reports? Department reports?
Just real quick, our next meeting is September 2nd. And we're going to be bringing the objective design standards. I don't know if you guys remember our discussion about that. So they're pretty much done. So we're planning to bring that on the 2nd. So we will be having one. Let us know if you can't make that night, just to make sure we have enough, enough people. What's it? Okay. Well, we're going to have a meeting in September. I just, I forgot that was Labor Day. We'll be queuing, asking you for what special day probably the next week would be.
Okay. It's the day after Memorial Day.
It's the day after.
Or Labor Day.
So the other thing I just wanted to mention, and Mike has something to bring up too, is obviously, everyone knows it's National Night Out. So I hope everyone can walk over there and support the chief and, and the police department.
Thank you, Kevin. And then I just wanted to reiterate an email I sent earlier to the commission today. All of you are up on your anti-harassment training, except for Commissioner Wiggie. So there is a virtual, he, he had to stick through the online version, which is rough. There is a virtual version in, it's a, it's not the same kind of online class that he took, but it's a virtual class that you can take and sign up. It's free. It's brought to you by our risk management folks. So I highly encourage that all of you sign up for that if you're available, or you're going to have to go through the route that Commissioner Wiggie went through and go through the online course, which is not as pleasant. So check your emails and sign up for that if you're available. And, but it is mandated. So we need everybody to have it by the end of September. You're, you don't have to go. You're good. You're good to go for two, for two years. But everybody else is up, including our alternates. So if you do not attend, I will be sending you out the link to the online course. And you'll have to take that in September instead. Check your emails.
Very good. Okay. Any other department reports?
That's it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the news, it's coming out about the Cloverdale Rancheria and Casino. Do you have any update on the Cloverdale Rancheria and Casino?
I haven't heard anything. That's, that's the first I've heard that.
It's the first I saw of it, too. But I've already had.
Where'd you hear that?
I could send you the link.
Okay. Yeah, please do.
Yeah. But it's, it looks massive.
Yeah, I thought I saw that, too. And I was also confused. And so I looked it up and it was like way old news. And I was like, what's?
Someone gave me a call, you know, real, I, you know, obviously, I get a lot of random calls, real estate, you know, but yeah, someone called me about that. So I saw this in the, I don't know where they saw it, but I, yeah, I.
Well, the problem is the River Rock Casino was just bought by Caesars.
Yes.
So Caesars is going to remodel the River Rock Casino and put a hotel in there, which is actually a model they've been talking about for decades.
Yes.
And so to put that in is going to help them because they were dying, because they were having to transport people to them. And there was no services in Geyserville. So it's going to change Geyserville. But that's where I think this is resurfacing the whole Cloverdale Rancheria. And if that's still tied to that project doing the same thing, I would love to know about it.
Might go well with the 93 proposed condos for Geyserville, right?
Yeah, yeah.
93 going in on the corner of Canyon Drive and Geyserville Boulevard, yeah. I mean, it's proposed. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a done deal at this point.
What about the other casino, the, the one down in Windsor that the county is?
The Koi, the, the Koi Tribe? Yeah, they, I don't know where that's at.
I, I saw an article in the PD that the county has joined a lawsuit against it. There's several. Full, the one, the one in.
Creighton.
Runner part is, is suing them to stop it. And the county, it's like a big mess.
Now, if you can find any information, I would love to hear about that in our next special meeting.
Any other commission direction on future agenda items? I think I, I did ask about the new bill that was passed for CWA exemption, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you, clarify what we're going to do with that.
Perfect. Anything else? Okay. I will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting, which will be scheduled sometime in September, is 6:46. Meeting adjourned.